So it's gotta be a seven o'clock.
Alrighty, well, thank you for the call. It doesn't really matter. It's, you know, it's, it's. Well, that's exactly it. And, you know, it was, I would just be able to say, why would I sign a, a, a letter that, you know, he invited me to write it, but I just didn't think that it was appropriate to have candidates. I don't want to give her, I don't want to give her publicity. Why legitimize her? Of course, of course she'd be interested in it because she wants her name associated with it, but who is, you know, who the heck is she? She's, she's, she's not a public figure. She's never been to a, to a, to a damn meeting, you know? So, anyway. Alright, okay. See you, bye.
I just think the two.
This will all like then?
I'm getting grasped. What? You get one vote for you? You're reading?
I don't care who you vote for. I want to go, go branch out.
What about the question? I don't understand what it means.
Basically, should we raise our taxes? In order to fix.
And making us. I'm gonna have to look there to. Also, I'm. I just think the.
Just for. Should say. Special.
Come up to more than five ratings. I don't know if I want to go get some more. Okay, the taxes. That's good. I'm gonna plan that it would be a, Simon Swaroj, come back to sure this time. We can already, oh, it's a talk.
Go for it.
What's the name? Six. I don't have enough space. Maybe I wrote a little. Oh, I didn't put water on top. No, you don't. That says, you don't push that. No one will. You're fine. For, for, wait, now we know where we are.
Says no, neither.
Oh, okay. I didn't just find myself. What is it? Do I have to have water? I feel like it happens that ninety-five percent. Remember why these things make me nervous, voter place, stay up here. I only did one. Mary got so bad.
Now I'm worried. Uh, yes. Actually, Jim called it. First time you ever ran for something major. Ran for.
Is that close enough?
He ran for. Plaid Ward, Plaid Ward was still elected. He went for, now his way home. He was on his way home and he remembered that he hadn't voted yet. And he went over and voted, and he won by one vote. He had to vote.
I'm on the phone.
Oh, he's on the phone.
Okay. Because.
I don't have an internet, I don't have an internet connection.
All right. Melissa will not be joining us tonight, so it's just the force. Um, okay, so, um, we'll call the meeting to order and open the meeting, and as we've done, lately because of the COVID situation, I'll read the, um, the rules per the script we have in front of us. And this is, um, the main and board of selectmen, uh, meeting. And I'll confirm the members in attendance. David Gavin?
Yes.
Armand DeBecary?
Yes.
Justine. John?
Yeah.
And I'm here, Krista Silva. And also, um, from Town Hall. Greg Johnson?
Here.
He's here. Megan Zamudo is here.
Here.
And Becky Moskis here. The rest from Town Hall. Um, so, goodness, good evening. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. It states, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, due to the help of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gathering, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting lots to have all meetings in a probably accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring at, public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law, and this meeting will have a, public comment section and some participation as is required by some of the, um, items to discuss. For this meeting of the mained Board of Selectmen slash Select Board, we're convening by Zoom, posted on the town's website and telephone as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public can join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that other, other people maybe will see you, and to take care not to screen share your computer because anything you broadcast may be captioned by the recording. For board documents, our board documents materials are all available on board doc, except for any executive session materials, which we do not have any of tonight. And we recommend the members in the public follow the agenda as posed and change the direction. Um, we're not going to turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do, cover the ground for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Um, as a chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and after they conclude marks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. So please hold your comments until your name is called. Further, remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please speak in a clear voice in a way that helps us generate accurate minutes. Um, when there's a response to be made, please wait till the chair or the person on the floor yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the, taking careful to identify yourself. And for items and public comments, um, after the members have spoken, I will afford the public comment as follows. I'll ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify them by their names and address only. Now, um, then please keep your comments as brief as possible, as the suggestion is, we will afford three minutes for any public comments. And also, fire, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Those are the rules of the meeting. Suggested by the state. Special duty on the agenda, in the pledge of allegiance, we're gonna forego that tonight in lieu, uh, because of, we don't have a flag in home, so, um, right now, we will get to our first set of public comments, and if there's anybody would like to make a public comment, give us a wave and we'll, um, open the floor up. Okay, um, so there are no public comments, and then the second item is the open space request. For, um, Be Yoga, Be the Love Yoga Studio, request for Rio Park, and if there's a motion, I'll read the motion. And the motion is to approve the application for the use of Rio Road Park by Julie Love Gagin for the period of June 10th through September 30th, 2020. On Tuesdays, Fridays, and Sundays between the hour eight, 9:00 AM, pending adherence by the applicant to all federal, state, and local public safety and health regulations and guidance. Reckon.
Hi, everyone. Is it my turn to talk?
No, I'm waiting for someone to second the motion.
Oh, second, sorry. You cut out a little bit, Chris.
Thank you. Um. Um. Okay, um, so Julie, go ahead.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me jump on this call. I know, um, this is a special meeting, so I'll be as brief as I can be. I am Be the Love Yoga Downtown. We are a member-based yoga studio, um, and we, our industry in particular has been hard hit by COVID. Um, we are not able to do any physical in-person classes, um, as we are in phase three of reopening. Further, most of our staff are not willing, not really interested or willing or feel safe enough to have in-studio classes at this time. Um, we're still researching and understanding the, um, ways in which COVID is being, uh, transferred among people, and it looks like fitness in particular is going to be an industry that has to be very careful with, um, disease protocols. And so for that reason, uh, we made the choice for the summer months to have only, uh, to have online-only classes and to offer in-person classes only, um, in outdoor spaces, weather-dependent. Um, and so for that reason, we, uh, as a team, looked at who was willing to do even that, um, and then looked at state guidelines, and so it looks like right now, um, we would be able to offer a ten-person maximum, including the instructor, so nine people plus the instructor, um, at least six feet apart, in an open space location, uh, pending approval of, you know, Ta, the, may, Tana Mayner Board of Health guidelines. People would come wearing masks, um, and then the question to the Board of Health would be whether or not they need to keep them on during, during the class itself. Uh, we would do pre-registration only, there would be absolutely no drop-ins. We would be members only, and the maximum is sixty minutes, and the amount of time that we spend in person together is also one of the things that we're conscious of in terms of transmission. And it's important moving forward that all of our, all of our classes are less than sixty minutes, um, and so, or maximum sixty minutes. Um, and so with that, we were, we chose Rio Road as a location because it's off the main road, it's quieter, so we won't have to shout to the physically distant people that will be located a little bit farther from the instructor. The instructor will stay, uh, in their marked location. We actually have cones already, um, that we've been using for, for public events and free events, so we have cones that will be able to designate where each of the mats will be laid out. We'll also have cones to mark the, uh, boundary by which anyone could come near the people practicing, um, and then, you know, we'll do our best to have a relaxing yoga class. Um, we hoped for, we chose the eight AM time block both because it'll be better for us, uh, weather-wise, less likely to be rain, and also, um, not quite as hot, and also because there's less likely to be kids playing in the park at that time, so, that is our, that's our proposal. I'm open to any questions that you might have, any concerns that you might have. Um, and we, thank you so much for letting me present here tonight.
You. And does anybody have any questions for Julie? David, Melissa, I mean, Justine, Armand?
I just wanted to ask, um, to clarify that the, the field that you're, you're talking about, the field that's next to the playground, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, alright, yeah.
One of our instructors actually lives across the street, so.
Very convenient.
Yeah, very convenient.
All right. Greg, I assume there's no objections from anyone at Town Hall or DPW or?
No, and, um, in fact, no, I'm sorry, Chris, but, no, there's no objections. In fact, um, because we, well, we were entertaining the license not knowing when we were going to be going into phase two. As your opening plan, and they, but we are now in phase two, and, and so the governor is allowing for parks and, and outdoor activities to a certain degree to, to commence, but it's up to the local authority, obviously, to open up our individual. So, um, Justin DiMarco took, the DPW director, took the initiative, and then, and then we all sort of, uh, worked together to make sure we had clear guidance that would be posted at the parks and the, and the outdoor activities, as well as a disclaimer, just to make sure that people understand, you know, it's not perfect, um, you know, uh, there's, there's still, you're not completely risk-free by engaging it, uh, by the outdoor activities, but either way, um, that should be posted at all the parks in town. If, if not today, if they weren't already, then it will be soon, uh, but it's everything that Julie already, already, uh, acknowledged, you know, the various, personal hygiene and dispersion and when it's, I, I have confidence that she'll do a good job.
Yeah, I'm really not interested in getting sick, so.
Or, or your clientele, I'm sure.
Exactly, yeah. We don't want to be, we don't want to go there, um, we want to be safe and healthy as possible. Thanks, Craig.
Okay. David, nothing? Oh, I guess since there's no questions from the rest of the board, I, I don't have any questions either. I think they've all been answered. Um, we'll go down the vote. Um, David?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Let me, yes, as well, so, um, good luck, Julie, I guess, does she need a permit or anything?
Yeah, uh, well, she supplied the application. And I believe that there is a permit. Well, either way.
Right, is there anything that we?
Yeah, I did put the permit.
Yeah, I did put the permit in there today. Um, if I can use your stamps to stamp it, I will scan it in and get it over to Julie. And I'll put it in the Outlook calendar. So everyone knows that the time is booked for the rest.
Armand, Armand, does Becky have your permission to use your stamp?
Yes, absolutely.
And David and Justine, if you agree, and I will agree, we just give a thumbs up?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you all so much. Thank you. I may have to jump off a little early because my husband's on the planning board meeting right now. So, um, you know, our children are being watched by television. But thank you all so much. Really appreciate it.
Good luck.
Have fun. Good luck.
All right. Now, the third item is the EDC, the Economic Development Committee. The question we started this meeting, we carry on from last week in regards to sidewalk dining and outdoor dining in Maynard. And there's a motion to approve the proposed concept plan for outdoor business in support of Maynard Enterprises as endorsed by the EDC. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Greg, you want to just, well, Megan, you want to just tell us what we, what you guys have come up with?
Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
This is Megan Smuto, Assistant Town Administrator. So last week we had a very productive conversation about how businesses can expand their footprint during this time of restrictions. Got a lot of business feedback and, you know, we had a good discussion at this meeting. So we discussed a few options. One of them, you know, I think we really kind of had consensus to focus on an opt-in program where businesses that are interested could request to use municipal space, whether it be parking areas or sidewalks to expand their footprint and, you know, basically expand their premises. So we, you know, a team of town staff and Economic Development Committee members and members of the Maynard Business Alliance worked together this week to come up with a proposal that you have in board docs. And basically what we're, the proposal is, is twofold. One, businesses can request to use municipal property to expand their footprint. And two, it is the implementation of some traffic calming measures on Main Street and Nathan Street in the core of downtown. And the reason that was included in this proposal is because we want to make sure cars are slowing down. It's a very wide road. It's 21 feet and it's a one-way. So, you know, with working with public safety, they felt comfortable allowing for a 14-foot corridor to travel through with vehicular traffic. So that would give a little more space to businesses if they were interested and it would also slow down the traffic in, in those areas. So that's what we came up with. And, you know, I heard loud and clear last week that, you know, this board was hoping to support the business community and, you know, move forward on this. So what we did was work with town council to create an application for this path forward. And, um, you know, I have a timeline in here as well. We're hoping that, you know, so I think businesses had to apply today for the first round. And what I mean by that is we really need to take a look at the two main four streets in downtown Maynard to think about how it will affect traffic and how it will impact parking. So before we kind of created new problems, we wanted to see who was even interested and then how we could design the streets. So we have had some businesses that have been interested and they have completed applications and submitted them to my office. And we've been reviewing them by through town staff. So I don't have the proposals to, for you to review today. I, I was hoping to kind of get a solid okay that this path forward is sufficient for, you know, for this board. But I am asking that, you know, maybe that this board would have a meeting prior to town meeting to review the applications that have been submitted so that businesses can move forward with purchasing equipment and designing their space and setting it up so that they can open as soon as possible. So that's basically, that's basically kind of where we are with this and I'm happy to answer any questions. I feel like I've been a little bit in the weeds with it. So if I, if I didn't go high enough level, I apologize. But, um, you know, I'm happy to discuss this further.
I assume when you.
You did it.
Go ahead, Armand.
No, I was gonna say, I just want to reiterate the, the tremendous amount of work that she put into this. And I know other people have helped her, talking about being in the weeds. But you've done an unbelievable job to prepare and have this process in place. So hats off to you.
My, my question to you, um, Megan, is we don't, in, in doing this, we're not having to approach the ABCC, correct?
Yes.
Well, so the way the state had designed this is giving the board of selectmen the power to adjust liquor licenses. So what we have, oh, sorry.
Correct. But we don't have to go back to the state in this instance. We have the, we have the authority to allow this without going to the ABCC.
We have to report to them after.
I have to report.
Yeah.
And I have to have the square footage of the patios or whatever, whatever, um, footage. If it's 300 square feet or 600 square feet for their additional space, that's what we need to know. Plus the paperwork that's filled out and I have to revise each one of those liquor licenses.
Right, but we don't need permission.
No.
Right.
You are commissioned.
Right, so if you were gonna suggest to us that you have a plan, we would only, would we need to vote? Or could you, could we just vote on the plan and allow you to vote on, you know, the application based on what we know? I'm just thinking to save a little time, that's all.
Right.
And still be legal.
So, you know, I think there is some room to have, to designate staff to work on, you know, some of these items. For example, I think the common vehicular license and the zoning. But I just kind of, I figured that since the board of selectmen is the local licensing authority and from, for most of these applications, you know, you would have to approve that one. We might as well just approve everything at once. Does that make, so?
My only, my only, my only concern in asking the question is that Saturday is gonna be a busy day.
Yeah.
You know, uh, busy, confusing for many, um, down for lots of different departments in town, including Town Hall, the Town Clerk Staff and, and many others. I just don't think we can, you know, the four of five of us are going to be able to, at that location, have a, a meeting. I just don't, I just don't see that, I don't see that coming together as easily as we've done it in the past where we're, five of us are captured in the auditorium. We can go out in the hallway, call a meeting to order, do what we have to do, right to rolling. I don't know how we're gonna do that at, at Mill and Main on, on Saturday morning. I'm happy to try and do it at a different time, but then, you know, you also has graduation, the diploma ceremony that day. And many others have similar, you know, commitments. So I'm just trying to figure out how we could do something tonight to allow us to, um, let the folks that need to get moving, get moving and start to, um, operate in the manner that the government is, um, to allow them to, without having to drag us all back in and try and vote and everything when it's just not really likely to work out that way.
Mr. Chairman? Jack McKeen, is it possible or legal that the board can delegate formally in this meeting the authority to approve these to the town administrator and assistant town?
Yeah, Jack, I don't know if you were listening to what I said, but that is what I said. So, yeah.
So I, so I, I, I don't, I don't think that is authorized. Like I, I don't, I don't think you can delegate the authority to approve the expansion or alteration to a liquor license to staff. I think it has to be the executive body. So there, so.
Yeah, but we, not.
So I, I, I do, I, it's, I understand the point you're making and I'm, and I'm, and I'm appreciative of the confidence and the trust that you give in the staff. But I, I believe without looking over the law, um, I would, I would, and I, so I could confirm this. But I believe that the local licensing authority has to approve individual permits. So the, but that's, you could approve individual permits as to whatever information you have. And then, um, and you could say like the, the, you know, the, the authorization to open it has to be, it could be contingent upon approval of building permit, the health, the, you know, the health agent's approval, the food inspector's approval, whatever the case is. But the app, the, the individual application should be approved per the, you know, by the licensee, by the executive body. So maybe, yeah.
So this, 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 right now, we don't have the applications in front of us.
No.
Correct?
No, because they're not, as Megan said, that, that not, I don't, did you get one that was like even fully complete?
Um, no, I mean, we're still missing a couple of pieces, um, but they're, they're getting there, you know, we're, it was a quick turnaround. We really, we didn't get the application out until Friday morning. So we're trying to give people a couple of days and, and I wanted to, I wanted to try to have our team vet it before, you know, asking for the board's approval, um, since it is in, you know, public way and it's just a different program. But I completely understand the urgency, so.
Megan, Megan, what would be the, um, the, the, if we were to briefly talk as a group on Saturday, which, I mean, how extensive is that, is the approval? Is it just a, here's, here's what we've got and bang?
What I was hoping to do is have everything in, um, you know, board docs Thursday because it would be fully reviewed. So we would have everything in there about, okay, you know, there's a concern about, um, X. And it, it will be addressed prior to, you know, implementation. So we would have all the language set up so that you could say, okay, this is good pending insurance. This is good pending, you know, this, and then ask for an approval. And, you know, one, one thing I suppose happened is that board could, if they had questions about specific proposals, they could just reach out to me. And, you know, I could speak to it ahead of time, but it's not ideal. I, I, I.
So.
That's why I agree with Greg. I don't think, I don't think the, um, the, the law is intended to allow anyone other than the executive approve these things. And you don't want to, you don't want to take the risk that, you know, as, as we've said, the ABCC is going to be involved. And God forbid they shut it down because we didn't follow a product protocol that just required us to have a quick, a quick vote.
Hey, Chris, uh, could I, can I make a suggestion? I mean, if, if she's gonna have everything in the board doc by Thursday, can we have a quick meeting on Friday night?
I, I, I was gonna suggest that we post ourselves for Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And so any, it just, you know, we can't do it for Thursday because that mean we had to post today.
Yeah, we can post them all morning for Friday.
Post for Saturday, Justine, what time do you have to be? Can you do 8:00 AM Saturday, Justine?
No, um, I can't do 8:00. I've got a 8:30, um, I'm sorry, my son's getting home at 8:30 in the morning.
No, I know. I wasn't sure what time that kicked off. I know there was you in the earliest group.
How about, how about doing something after town meeting? Like after, I assume, Justine, you're planning on being at town meeting. So if, if you are, just having a quick discussion after town meeting has ended. People are gonna be leaving, so we're gonna be there. We're gonna be at the front based on the, and it's gonna, it's not, it's gonna be like, you know, Gillette Stadium getting out of there if there's any number of people there. So we're not gonna be gone in 10 minutes. So if it's, if it's a quick approval, that might be the way to do it.
Do you, I, David, would you be available for Friday night as well? A quick call Friday?
I, I think so, yeah. At seven? Yeah.
Friday at seven?
Yeah.
Friday night, I'd have to call in, but, um, I can probably do that.
So Megan, wanna post us for Friday and Saturday? Friday at seven and Saturday say, I guess, I guess we could post it with the time openers immediately following town meeting.
Yeah.
So you, you want to have the two though? Is that, because I think.
So post us for both and we'll use the one that, that, that makes the most sense to you guys, knowing what you know after the final elections come Friday?
Yeah, there's no difference to me Friday or Saturday. I, you know, I'm, I'm hoping to have everything reviewed as soon as possible and have comments to everyone in board docs.
We can't post for Thursday late. So if we post for.
No, Friday is good.
Yeah.
I could even do that. I could even do Saturday or I could, I could do it before the meeting. I could do it anytime, probably after 10:30 on Saturday morning.
But why can't we do Friday night? I mean, why, what's, I don't understand. If we could post it in time and she's gonna have everything in the board docs in time for us to review, then why can't we just do a Friday night? I don't get it.
Well, if, I, I, you don't want to infringe, Justine's got family issues going on. I don't want to infringe on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's perfectly fine. So, but if we do Friday, I think Chris's point is that in case we don't get it done Friday, we'll do both. I, I don't know. I just.
I don't, I don't see what the issue would be on Saturday afternoon after town meeting. I don't think it's gonna be that complex of an issue, but, uh, I'm okay for Friday night.
So I don't think it would be a complex issue after Tommy, before Tommy, I think we'd.
Yes.
Has to, everything to work properly based on what the conversations we've had with Dick and the rest of the group that have been kind of, you know, following along. If the town meeting has been planned, I think that we're anticipating a, not problems, but just a lot of moving parts.
I would agree with that. And that's why I think after town meeting, as I said, when people are leaving, what better opportunity? We're just gonna be sitting there.
Well, Megan, if, if, if you could do that, post us for Friday night at seven and Saturday immediately following town meeting. And then we can, we'll be done with it by then.
Is alcohol allowed at a public meeting on a Friday night?
Hey, tailgating.
Tailgating where?
Not at, not at town meeting. I'm talking about Friday night. That's my, uh, my relax time for a nice beer.
Nice, nice.
Well, you can have a beer.
Just on Friday night? You don't do it every night?
Well, I don't like to, I don't like to broadcast that.
What are you saying? I mean, you drink, I don't drink on school nights.
Nor do I.
I don't know. It's so, all right. So that's, that's, that part's done. But so Megan, do we, we don't really have a concept in front of us, right?
It's just a memo. I just, you know, we talked about a lot of different things last week. And now we drilled it down to this is what we're doing. This is what we're offering. So I just wanted to get, you know, confirm that the board's comfortable with this before I present any applications to you, you know, with this concept of narrowing the streets and allowing businesses to opt in to expand their premises on municipal property.
Quick, go ahead, Justine.
Oh, thanks, David. Um, so just a quick thing as far as when, um, when we do get the applications, when you do decide who's, who is put in for it. When you submit that, will there also be a kind of a visual plan of how you and how you visualize that happening?
Yes, um, we, we could ask all applicants to include a plan that specifically shows spacing between seats and shows the materials of the furniture. Um, it's pretty, it's pretty detailed for the things that we're asking for. So it, the, the thing, the benefit of this application is that it meets all the criteria for, um, if there's any zoning questions, public health, liquor license. Common Vicks. So you fill it all at once and it's trying to streamline it and hit all of the permitting at one time.
Okay, and I was actually, what I was. Both, um, so a visual of the street. So how, how the street.
Yes, I did, I did ask for a photo of existing conditions and those have been, um, those have been submitted. The plans range and, you know, depending on who's kind of applying for it, what, what it physically looks like. But, um, you know, I'm trying to collect as much information, but also understanding that a lot, you know, a lot of applicants who are on the phone, who are on the call today, you know, are kind of doing it themselves and coming up with the measurements for, for what they're planning on doing. So.
Okay.
My couple of quick comments. First off, have, maybe I missed it during your earlier presentation. But the police have signed off and the fire department has signed off on these, the width of the road as it would be narrowed down to, and everything's okay with that. So, um, okay, great. Secondly, uh, and I guess this in many ways goes back to Julie's issue, use of public land. What are the requirements for any additional insurance for the individual businesses? And, you know, I wasn't asked during Julie's presentation, but is the town liable for public property issues? Say in this situation, if somebody trips and falls. for public property issues, say, in this situation, if somebody trips and falls and gets injured as a result of a, uh, you know, a crack in the roadway? And similarly, on the prior issue, if, if somebody gets hurt at the playground, um, is there an insurance issue and has that been addressed?
Sure, um, I can speak to, for, for the municipal, um, expansion of premises program. There is a figure listed in several different insurance policies, um, included in the license agreement that the applicant has to fill out and complete with the town of Maynard. So it is a, you know, it's a five-page document created by town council to require, um, applicants to fill out so that they are requesting use of our property and that we are not liable for anything that happens on it during this period that's been expressed.
And can we address the prior issue that's already been voted on? Is the same thing true there?
So there's a liability disclaimer that, you know, to use the park. So, so we don't require a family to have an insurance certificate when they use the park, right?
Right.
So we, to, to a degree, we don't want to overburden, you know, we don't want to kind of like, uh, add, add a restriction that we wouldn't have already in place. Um, but either way, there's a disclaimer and a notice that will be posted, um, and I actually just, we just developed it within the last twenty-four hours. So I uploaded the TA report so you guys can see it, but, but it's going to be posted to all the, um, it's going to be posted to all the parks and grounds and outdoor facilities and whatnot.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
So, so actually, the motion you made and I'm in second, there's really nothing to vote on, so we'll just withdraw that motion. And for the purpose of the discussion, I'm, I'm okay with whatever plan you got up with, um, Megan, you know, we've talked about it quite a bit and what the options are, and what you guys come up with is, you know, you guys are the ones that have discussed it and kind of vetted the options and, and opportunities. So I'm okay with you guys making that decision because we end up having to say with each individual licensee, um, as we look at the, um, submissions on the application. So it's, there's kind of a, um, you know, a, um, a safety net for us. So you guys, you guys are going to create the plan and we're going to approve the individual licenses. I don't think, does anybody have, does anybody on the board have a problem with that thought process, you know, allow the E D C and Justine, I mean, the E D C, E D C and Megan to come up with the, um, overall concept and plan? And we just vote on the individual licenses as, as presented to us?
I don't have a problem with that.
David, are you okay with that as well?
My only concern would be that we're, whatever we do is within the, within the, um, you know, the four walls of the, what the statutory language says we can do, so that we're not jeopardizing, um, decision-making because, you know, we failed to do something that we should have done. That's really my only concern would be, um, making sure that we are properly, uh, if something needs to be approved by the executive board, that it is being approved by the executive board.
All right, so that, that being said, we can, we could always, whether it's Friday night or Saturday afternoon, we'll have a, have a proposal, read it, and then vote on the individual licenses as well. You know, vote on the proposal as presented and then vote on the individual licenses as well.
It's all very subjective anyways, like each, each, each location and, and the sort of, um, the, 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 the scale of each location, what they're proposing is very subjective, like it's all situational according to where the location of it and whatnot. So, yeah, you would, it's, I agree with you, Chris, that it is more appropriate to do it individual basis.
Okay. Anybody else have any discussion points on that, anyone on the board? All right, Megan, let us know.
So, sorry, just to clarify, does the board want, do you want to meet Friday or Saturday? I, because I don't know.
We want.
It will all be ready for Friday or Saturday, I mean, either one.
Well, whatever, well, post us for both, please.
Okay.
Seven, seven PM Friday and immediately following the annual town meeting on Saturday, and then we'll, um, we'll, you know, we'll know which one of those meetings we're going to use and the other one will, will cancel.
Okay.
Well, we, we typically do a, you typically post a meeting of the selectmen in case you have to caucus for whatever reason and vote during, during the selectmen, planning board to, you know, like whatever body has to vote potentially. Um, it's always a good recommendation to post the, um, meeting of that body. So you, you would, I was planning on posting a meeting for you anyways on Saturday, uh, yeah, on Saturday, just in case.
Yeah, we, we typically do post for, for town meeting anyway.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Next item under development is the open table. Um, there's a motion that reads to approve.
Okay, so I can have all of you.
So, motion to approve use by Open Table Inc. of the eastern portion of Naylor Court Central Parking Area in support of their fresh market pantry as proposed in accordance with downtown business supports, support plans and contention upon adherence to all federal, state, and local public safety and health directions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Greg or, you know, just give us an introduction to this one?
Yep, so, um, Janine Calabria, who's the executive director for Open Table, um, approached the town after coming back from sabbatical, uh, and prior to that, we'd been working with Joe Block and some of other colleagues of Janine, um, in supporting their operations at the rear of their building, which is actually on the Naylor Court Central Base, Central Parking Basin, um, uh, the parking area to the end towards, um, the Emerson Hospital, uh, new establishment, you know, like towards, towards the firehouse and whatnot. Um, so they've been.
Which is what they're using now.
That is what they're using now, but they want to shift further over. And they also want to make sure that it's clear, you know, as their operations continue in as well, you know, but, but may or may not coincide with, uh, the phase two opening, as we were just discussing, that they are still authorized to, to that space. They want to make sure that they're doing everything on the up and up. Um, and, and so they, Janine spoke with, uh, Megan and I, we provided an overview of, of what those, what those plans may be, but Janine is on the line now. So Janine, would you want to, do you want to just explain any more to the board?
Well, we just, we just wanted to make sure as the economy opens up, um, that we realize there probably increased parking needs. And, um, we thought if we were to shift our, um, operation further to the east, it would take even fewer parking spots. We just want to be mindful that the other businesses want to get going and want to be respectful of that. Um, so far, even when there is a car parked there, you know, our team stops, we help the person get out and get around, so it's not been an issue, but we just want to make sure that we have the proper authorization to do that. And so we submitted the same application and permit along with our insurance certificate and all that, so that we are participating on the same, in the same official way that other businesses would be.
I have a quick comment, a question, a great idea. Thank you for, you know, continuing to serve those in need. My question is, when, I believe theaters have been notarized or noted that they're supposed to be open in phase three, it may even be part, second part of.
I thought it was four.
I saw it today. I think that it's, it's very soon versus, I thought it was much later. Um, it may be three, but my concern would be not only the theater, but the new, uh, ice cream shop, um, that's over there. Would this in any way infringe on people that wanted to park and visit that new business and/or go to the theater?
Could, no, it could. Yeah.
And we have to remember to be considerate of all of our businesses that are trying to get, um, you know, back open and running and, uh, especially for a brand new business like the ice cream shop, that might have more people that want to go there because it's brand new, uh, to test it out. So just, uh, you know, something to be considerate about, and I don't know what the, what the impact of this program is. Does it shut, I'm looking at the map, does it shut down the entire parking lot? I know that there's a flow, I've been by there, they have a table that typically they set up at the entranceway, and, uh, and I don't know if that's going to continue. Um, so it just.
There's no, there's no table, to my knowledge, at the entrance.
I thought there was one where people checked in or something at the entrance.
No, not, not, I mean, I was there today and operating, so it's, it's over by our building. There's a table for if there's a walker or a cyclist that's not driving. They, we can safely put their groceries on a table and not hand it to them. The whole, the whole thing is keeping six foot difference. But, and no, this is a concern. When the movie theater opens and the ice cream shop opens, we'll need to reconsider how we do this. And one of the things, of course, with weather, we're already, uh, looking at purchasing online ordering system, which a lot of pantries are going to really, they were doing it in New York City just because of, um, lack of space to, uh, get people in a building to get groceries, but now people all over the country are starting to use online ordering systems so that, um, we, we have this pack and pick and pack group that packs the bags, um, ahead of time, and then it would just be one person coming to like a window or a door, getting their groceries, not coming into Open Table, like, and that's the problem. Um, but it would be fewer, fewer parking spots. And the other thing that's kind of nice is all the, you know, Main Street businesses that have not liked Open Table operating on Main Street are not dealing with that right now. It's a much less, much less, um, ma- many fewer cars parked and much faster. So I would say it's a, it's a lesser load than before.
It is also, just to note, I, the proposed change of times as well, so it's not, it's not only, correct me if I'm wrong, Janine, but I'm just reading off the memo, but it's, um.
Yeah, we're willing to change our times if that'll make people happier. Uh, right now, it's, it, it, I mean, it's not an easy thing just to change the time. What we're saying is, if, if the movie, I think the movie theater that was open every night, isn't, I'm not sure how we do that. There may be a night that they're less crowded, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's an option.
Janine, are you proposing to keep it as the Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Tuesdays until thirty to six thirty, Thursdays from three to six thirty? Or are you, are you?
Yeah, we're, we're proposing to continue that until we need to change it and we're open it. What we're saying is, we get it, the small businesses need our support as well as open people needing food. We are willing to make changes, including changing our schedule, but I don't want to change it today because it is a huge thing to change the schedule. Um, but what I'm saying is, when it comes time, we will change the schedule.
Yeah, I mean, to your point, Janine, you're saying depending on what nights is not as busy at the movie theater, then you could always adjust.
Right, my, we used to operate Monday nights, but then when we had the dinner, we stopped, but the dinners are closed till who knows when. Um, we're now making prepared meals that just go in the bags. So, you know, Monday night is probably still a fairly slow night. We could probably switch to Monday night for people who have to come after work. I think even Tuesdays, I mean, looking at your proposal where it's, it's Tuesdays for the proposed, if the, when the outdoor dining starts, um, I mean, it would look like that would be the only night that would really cause any kind of an issue. The Thursday from three to four thirty, I mean, I, I think that it's the middle, it's, you know, the afternoon, it probably isn't, unless there's a, you know, a bigger event going on. So, um, originally, I was a little concerned about that too, but I think that as long as we just have the ability to revisit if we have to, if it really. Um, but just kind of take a chance and, and, I mean, you, you're all doing really good work and, you know, we will obviously want to support this as well. So, thank you. Yeah, so, so right now, we have it till six thirty, Tuesday nights and Thursday nights is till six thirty, but we can change it if needed. Yeah. Okay. People don't come much between, we, we're actually leaving five to six thirty for new people, so all the folks that have been impacted by COVID seem to be coming around that time. It's our regulars who much rather come earlier because there's a lot of senior citizens, I would say, that rely on us. So, yeah. All right. Megan, is there anything else you need for my, my application?
Um, no, I don't think so right now. I think we're okay.
Okay, great.
But I, you know, I, it needs to be vetted by, by the team. Uh, hasn't, we haven't done that yet, but I will, you know, make sure that that gets confirmed, um, you know, through the review team.
Okay, great. I was happy to see we had enough insurance. I was a little worried about it. Turns out we do, so. Good. All right, thank you.
Well, the, the board can vote, Bill, the, yeah, there's a motion.
Yeah, so, um, motions to, um, has been made and seconded, and we'll just do the roll call vote. David?
Before we.
Huh?
Can you do it again, David?
Uh, before we vote, is, is this intended to be permanent, or is this just intended to be until the time that we are back to our new normal per se?
Um, that's a good question, David. We're actually looking at, um, changing to an online ordering system. And if we do that, it will actually be a solution to a lot of issues. It'd be a lot less parking issues because people will just come when their appointment time is to pick up their groceries. So I think the pandemic sort of pushed this idea, we had talked about it before and now it's going to happen. So, uh, you know, and reopening for dinners, I, I don't know. I mean, none of us are in any hurry to do that. Again, that's, that was Monday night and, and I don't think many people had a problem with dinners. It's been more the, uh, valet parking in the front, especially on Thanksgiving time, it's been hard for people.
Um, yeah, um, my concern is about once we are back to having other businesses open and, um, taking away parking for not only the ones I mentioned, but importantly, for the movie theater and the, uh, the new ice cream store. And perhaps if we see how this, how this, uh, works through the COVID period, you know, we have these phases and I don't know what, what the timeline is for the phases. And I know that you, your, your guests are, you know, you need to notify them in time to be able to make sure that everybody knows what the new process may be. So I, I understand that. Um, I just, I just don't want to impact, um, inadvertently impact other businesses as, as an, uh, in an attempt to help with Open Table. So if we could somehow try, try it as a, um, a pilot program of some sort through phase two or, you know, which is another two weeks away, through phase three A of the, uh, of the reopening. Again, I, I'm, I'm just concerned about how it impacts parking for other businesses. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, and I'm certainly not opposed to it because like, I think it's an important thing, especially with the numbers of people that have, that are increasingly in need, um, especially in the current environment. Um, I see the need for it. I just don't want to impact, sort of have it rebound on us.
Unintended consequences, if you will.
Exactly. That was the phrase I was looking for.
Uh, but I, and I think that's kind of why I said the same thing to, to Janine is, is that I would like to, you know, kind of reserve the right that if for some reason we find it's not working, if we're, if we're receiving a lot of needs or we notice that there's a problem, we can just revisit it. But, you know, at this moment, moving forward, um, you know, until we hear that there's a problem, I don't see a problem with moving it forward.
Yeah. And what I heard from Janine that she's, they're open to, you know, revisit this, so I'm okay too.
Yeah, we, we get it that this is not our property, you know, that we appreciate your being so reasonable at this point because I don't know how else we could have operated. We just basically couldn't have. Um, and, you know, we, we've had other ideas. We've thought of maybe we would just hand out a bag out the back door, which is kind of weird, but we might, or having people park over by Mill and Main and wait till their number is called and then come. It's all quite, you know, a lot of people have ideas, but, um, this has been a great way to at least address things in, in an emergency situation. And trust me, we've got a lot of people working and an advisory team on how to get this new software up and going and what can we do since we know that the municipal parking lot is on borrowed time. So we really understand that. Yeah, and we appreciate it.
I, I, I don't, I don't think it's a concern because the, you know, the, um, spirit of collaboration that we've shared with you guys over time and all these issues resulting in changes in parking and your deliveries and drop offs and everything else, it's been, you know, great communication, great collaboration. I have no doubt that if we vote on this tonight and there's a problem, it's going to be resolved very quickly to everybody's satisfaction. So I, I, it's not even a concern to me personally. So I, it, it's not even a concern to me personally. It's, it's, let's, let's get it over with and do it and good. Keep providing the needed service that you guys provide is great. So I have no, no problem, you know, with the idea. So anyways, let's, let's vote. David?
Say yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Enamme, yes. Don't make me look bad, Janine. Luck, good luck. It's, I've gone by a few times and it looks like everything's running smoothly, so I'm sure we'll continue.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Janine also wanted to invite, I mean, or note that there is a drive through food drive scheduled for Friday. Janine, do you want to fill in?
Yeah, we're having a, we're having a reverse pantry. So people are coming and they're, and they're popping their trunks and our volunteers are unloading their groceries to go into our pantry. So 10:30 to 1 o'clock on Friday. And we're hoping to make it a really positive photo opportunity. We've asked Greg if he'd come and do some loading for us because I had a guest last week tell me that he lost his job March 12th, and it took him three months to get up the courage to come to the pantry. And he did say to me, having it be a drive through allowed him to save face. And so, you know, I just say that I think when we have leaders of the town come and, and participate, it sends a message to people that it's okay and we get it, it's that they need help right now and it's not forever, we hope. So, thank you. Posted on our website.
Awesome.
All right. Um, the, this is the Regional Partnership for Community Development Block Grant. This was something that Greg discussed with us. Was it part of the TH report last week?
Uh, yes, I believe it was.
So this was what we discussed, and it's a motion to approve the letter of interest for a proposed block grant application for fiscal year 2019. Community Development Block Grant COVID-19, DDBG-CV, funding under Massachusetts, EDBG program from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Give a second.
Second.
Want to just give us the, the update as to where we're at with this, Greg?
Yep, so we, we are one of multiple communities acting as the host community. They are doing much of the administrative procedures to apply for this grant, which is very specific to the, to the situation for COVID-19. If you're, if, if anyone in the public is familiar with CEBG, it's a federal program, but it allows, being a block grant, the state can, can, you know, the, the, the federal funds are vetted through the state and then the state can, can sort of divvy it up according to certain regulations. But they've, they've established this new program to help primarily partnerships, but specifically those worst hit economically during COVID-19 and micro enterprises in specific. So, uh, micro enterprise is defined in this program of five employees and, and that's it. Also, there's, there's a certain amount of, I think the, I think the average median income, I think you have to be below the average median income. But in other words, it's trying to identify and target those, those businesses and those, those worst hit by, you know, economically by the COVID situation. So we're, we're kind of scrambling it. We, we got invited last week and I was appreciative of the board for entertaining it. And I hope the board endorses the letter of interest now, which will just be submitted along with the rest of the application. So, in other words, I, I will inform the board if we get the grant, but there's, you know, it's not, it's not an overnight thing as the, as the notes show, like, it, it does take time to, you know, for the application to be vetted and then hopefully approved. And then we have to administer the program. The Town of Acton is looking for a third party administrator, administrative vendor to do that program because it's, it's no small undertaking to identify the, the proper applicants and, and recipients of this funding. Certainly not something the Town of Maynard has the resources to do. So we're, we, you know, we, we just want to make sure that we can take it opportunity, we can take advantage of this opportunity if, if it all goes well. So I'm only asking for the board to, to approve the letter of interest. So relatively uncommitted, it's, and, and if it all works out, it's, it's good money going towards people that could use it the most.
Do we know, Greg, is there, would there ever be a financial responsibility placed on our town to help with sharing of costs? Or is that all covered as part of the, the grant itself for the administration of the program?
Yeah, fair, fair question. My understanding is it's at no cost to the town. Otherwise, I, I, I would have.
Wouldn't entertain it.
Which is why, which is why I asked the question. And then the, the other question that I had had last week, and perhaps it was just because of my ignorance of the program, was relative to the equity towards Maynard businesses versus any other businesses. But it sounds like, as, as long as we're part of the conglomerate, any, any business that has less than five or five or less employees can apply. It's our responsibility to get the word out to those businesses so that they can apply properly and be prepared. I just don't want everything to go to businesses in Acton.
No, and I, I understand that concern and I share it. And, and so, and, and whatever sort of influence I can give, I'll, I'll try to make sure, as you said, that one, we are getting applications from the, and I don't even know how many micro enterprises, according to this definition, there are in Maynard. But I want to make sure that those people are aware of it and, and, and can apply. So, yes, I, I understand and I think those are valid points.
Okay.
Okay, any, Justine, I'm going to have many questions regarding the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I had a similar concern to David in regards to making sure that it's properly spread out. So, yeah, that's, that was, that would have been my only concern. Otherwise, you know, I, I don't see anything wrong with this.
Great.
Okay. Justine, nothing?
No, I think it's a, I think it's a great idea and I appreciate that Acton reached out to us and, and wanted to include us.
Okay, um, I agree. So we vote on it. Presented, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
I mean, yes as well. All right. Next up is for you, Greg, number four, tell me.
Right, so just as, as you've already alluded to this evening already, there's a town meeting on Saturday and we hope to get as many people to show up as possible. We, we, we need 75, uh, 75 registered voters to show up and then we can kick it off and, and try to get a good, a good amount of business done to start the new fiscal year, as well as, as well as handle some, some good projects that the town is moving forward with and whatnot. But to do that, as you've already said, Chris, it's, um, it's not straightforward. You know, like, we're asking a lot of cooperation, patience from the voters and from the staff and guests and whatnot. Um, you can see attached is, is the, is the most recent scheme. I know, I don't imagine there'll be much variation to this going forward. But, you know, the, hopefully we, we can fill up the parking lot, we can get it all done. People can get in and out as efficiently as we possibly can. But I've been getting good reports from the town clerk's office. Becky Moska's been doing good, good work and trying to prepare the packages that would be, so to speak, the packages that would be given out to voters as they arrive, which would include the warrants and the finance committee comments and others, and instructions for the voters and whatnot. So I, I've been really proud of the collaboration amongst the team and the town officials. Dick Downey, the town leader himself, of course, in, in, in getting to where we are right now. And things should be falling into place. But I also, this is Dick's show, so I want to make sure, you know, Dick, is there anything you want to highlight to the board or to the public?
I, oh, actually not. I share your comments about what a fabulous team it has. Everybody's really worked together trying to identify all of the constraints and all of the problem areas and coming up with, uh, you know, get well plans. And I, I'm really impressed. I'm always nervous when you cut new ground and you do things that never have been done before. But I think we've covered the bases pretty well with everybody's input. And I, I think it'll go smoothly. And my only concern is that there might be enough people that are concerned about it that we can't get a quorum, which might be an issue. We have just passed the legislation where you can reduce the quorum to 10% of its normal, which means that we could go down to seven and a half people from our 75. But I think there's some requirement in there where the selectmen have to make that known that they're thinking about doing that sometime in advance. And because the legislation has passed so late, I don't know whether that's still.
Right, it's not an option. You're right, Dick, it's seven days. So the, the executive body has to give, for an open town meeting, has to give seven days' notice and, and we're, we're within that, obviously.
Yeah, okay. So then that's, that's my only real concern is that if we don't get a quorum, I'm not sure what we do then.
And you know, Dick, it's funny, it's funny you say that. The feedback, I think that there's going to be a level of interest because of the unique aspect.
Exactly.
Of what's happening. People like to see, they like to look in to see, hey, what's happening here? And, you know, and I was, um, I was out walking, as I'm apt to do during my lunch break today, and I came across someone who I would not expect to necessarily attend a town meeting. And I was told how excited they were about Saturday and hopefully the weather and everything else. So, and when they were talking about Saturday, I thought they were talking about last weekend and I thought it was Saturday, you know, but. So I think that, um, I think your prediction, and I, I hate to lay a bet out there, but I think we're going to have a, a bigger crowd than you might expect because of the unique aspect of it. And I was actually going to suggest, and I'm sure the police have already thought about it, but because there will be, I think, a slow entrance in to speak to St. Bridget's and to make, and to see if we can possibly use their parking lot as a backup for if traffic starts to back up. It doesn't back up onto Sudbury Street or onto Percival Street or whatever, that we can actually use their parking lot as a, as a, as a Disney world, you know, back and forth to keep things moving. Again, I, I think that the unique aspect might draw out more people than we're expecting.
Well, we had this discussion early on with the team and it's not a prediction, actually. It's a, it's a concern, but not a prediction. And our, our thinking was that a lot of people aren't going to come. Want to be low, but then again, we got a proposition, that exclusion override is going to bring out a bunch of people. We went and looked at what historically has been done and the. Add for meetings is 193 people, two exceptions. We had two meetings in the last six or seven years that went up to close to 500 and they were both on 129 Park Street. So if we take them out as a, you know, a special situation, uh, I, I think we'll get the. Just a concern that if we don't, what, what do we do then?
We send out calls. We've done that for town meetings before where we've had to call people and say, hey, we need you. And we'll do it again if that, if it comes to that. I'm, I'm somewhat hopeful that, that people are going to want to see what's going on with this and are interested in it. And we, and I, I thank the community, the town hall for, you know, the announcements that's come out. And you, nobody can say they haven't been notified about it because it's, um, it's been very well broadcast relative to the reverse 911s and the, the instructions that are there. I, I'm confident that we'll do well. And it's, it's, it's mostly as a result of the cooperation of the team that you've been working with to get it all worked out.
Yeah, and I think the weather's going to cooperate too, so that would be nice.
I keep trying to remember the fact that you can bring snacks. I mean, when could you ever do that for a town meeting?
I'm, I'm not encouraging it, but people actually think it's not school property.
So actually, Dick, if I can ask two questions. I did have one person ask me, what happens if for some reason they have to leave? Is, is there the ability, if you have to drive away during the meeting, that you can? I realize it's not preferred, obviously.
Yeah, so if you look at the map, you'll see the red arrows there. That's just how they would go out.
Okay.
Out of their parking space and on that side.
Are they then allowed to return?
Probably a good question. We would, we talked about that and we didn't ever make a decision, I don't think, Greg. But we talked about maybe if somebody leaves, that we would give them a card or something so that they could come back in. Now, I think she couldn't do that because they had to re-register. And I don't know what the final outcome was.
Right, we can double check with Michelle Jenkins, the town clerk. But it, and I think if we might, if we can have somebody at the, at the table towards the entrance, so there's, there's multiple registration tables. If we can have somebody at one of the registration tables at the entrance in case people come in, which we might have to do for latecomers anyways. Like, you know, like, it's something we can, we can bring up tomorrow during our, our planning meeting.
Mr. Chairman? Michelle Jenkins, town clerk. Um, we, they, they do, they will have the ability to come back in. They're just going to go through the regular check-in table and they'll already be checked off so they can get back in. That's not a problem.
That is, what, in a typical situation, people turn in their, um, voting books and whatnot as they leave. Is there going to be collecting the voting books, you know, the little pads and stuff on the way out?
No, we're not going to do that this time around. I've already talked with DPW and it's going to be too, too difficult and it's going to slow people trying to get out, so they can just take it with them.
Okay.
And then my other question is actually just more for a board question or for, for Dick is, when should the board members be there on Saturday?
Well, I think you usually come about a half hour before. I would suggest that anybody who's, now, certain selectmen, I guess, are going to be parking in row one.
Right.
And then the chair is going to be up front. So I don't see needing to be there earlier than a half hour.
Okay.
Board perspective. Now, the general advice is arrive early because there's going to be a line of cars. And if you're not parking and if you do sit in the tent, I don't think you will be personally, Justine, but I would ask that you park in the staff area and walk up and sit in the tent so that we don't have empty cars, which would make collecting the ballots and things more difficult.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else about town?
No, I, my last comment is that, uh, great team. I really appreciate how everybody's worked and been so cooperative and, and generating good ideas that got us to this point, I think.
Been a little different than previous years.
Very much so. Thank you very much.
But, um, all right, well, thank you, Dick, and thanks for putting everything together. I know it's been a lot. Town administrators report?
It'll be great, it'll be, it'll be quick, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of things to highlight. One, great job Megan Samudo doing and the rest of the team. Of course, I already said it, but I just want to say it again. You know, she's, she really put a lot of work into it in a very short period of time and she will continue to do that as, as we've discussed. So very, very impressed, very proud of her. And, uh, the council on aging, I want to highlight that they will be shortly, I, I'm not entirely sure when, when they're going to start, but they will be moving towards online classes. They want to, they want to start giving some programming online for those seniors that are at home. You know, they already have a tough job of trying to address the seniors' needs. Now even more so because the, the seniors are, are isolated even more than, than, than normal. Um, and then the other, the other thing I want to point out, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, as I've said multiple times, the parks. as I've said multiple times, the parks, yes, we are, we are trying to open all the parks, but we are trying to make sure that we do it correctly and that people are very conscious and sensitive to everyone else that's going to be going to the park. If, if you're a member of the public and you're going to a park or an outdoor facility or whatnot, you know, watch yourself, be, be careful of how you're interacting and touching things and whatnot with, be more careful of other people's. You know, I know it's kind of a weird perspective, but make sure, make sure you're trying to be sensitive to other people. But I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sir. So, Chairman's report, like I said earlier, I did mention earlier that last night was a meeting of the Mayor Human Relations Committee, and there was a lot of different things that came out of the meeting for us to follow up on as a group, but one of the things is that the documents that came out of the last year's town meeting, it's been a special town meeting, that has, the final draft of that document has gone on to the legal group that the Human Relations Committee has been using for final editing and final approval and whatnot, and then I don't get, but I, because I'm just a liaison to the committee, but the committee anticipates and hopes that they will vote on this at their next meeting, July thirteenth. I had a question last night, Greg. And I, my recollection was that this group, the Human Relations Committee, is going to work on this document that came out of town meeting, and then it was going to it was going to be, going to come to us at some point at a later date for acceptance and approval by the town.
Yes.
That, your recollection?
Yeah, their advisory.
Yeah, that's right. Because the recollection and the memory of all the other people on the call and those on the committee is that, no, no, once they finish this, that it becomes policy, and I was not of that belief.
No, that's, no. So, as the board of selectmen, you know, a, as we say sometimes, you are the commissioners, you know, water sewer, sometimes police, and that is the case. You, you set policies for the police department. So, they advise, just like the economic development, like, just like other committees, they provide advice and, and, and perspective and whatnot and recommendations, and working with the staff as well. So, I, you know, police chief is there and whatnot, and so I, I, but yeah, you are the, you are the, you are the end, like, you are the, you are the approving authority.
Right. So, to Mike, to Mike's point, he sets police department policy. But I believe we approve the major policy changes.
Right, that's right.
So, I think, I think that discussion between now and July thirteenth, you know, needs to take place because the members of the Maynard Human Relations Committee firmly believe that once they vote to approve this, it becomes rule in the town of Maynard, and I do not think that that was the intent of their committee or their charge.
All right, I can, I can reach out to the chairs.
Okay.
Chris, has Mike Chief Noble been involved in those discussions, and did he, was he a voting member of the team?
Mike, Mike, Mike Noble has been very, very every step of the way. He's been great, you know, he's been great. He's, he's actually, you know, a lot of this stuff that is in this document was already within department policy, and a lot of it is stuff that we worked on as part of the accreditation process. So, he's very familiar with all this stuff, and, no, he's, he's been very, very, very involved. You know, yeah, so, it, they, he's, he's been there every step of the way.
Expressing, expressing concerns about issues, you know, back when, when that came through, that the chief, former chief and the then lieutenant expressed some, you know, there were a number of things that were agreeable to the police department that actually already existed. Large portion of what the, the, you know, the issues were that were brought to town meeting, but there were some that Mike, as lieutenant, felt concerned about, and so I'm assuming that Mike has expressed those concerns again. And I, I certainly agree with the initial point that policy is not set by a volunteer committee, policy is set by the board of selectmen, so, especially, you know, so, I don't think there's any question about that as to who has the final say on what the, the end game is.
That's my recollection. But to, to your other point, Mike has, my, you know, early on, I think that most of this, most of these things were agreed upon in, I guess, the, you know, I'm, I'm just searching for the correct term, but most of these things were kind of polished up very early on, and there was just a couple, and I don't need to digging points, just discussion points among the various members of the group who had different, you know, different thoughts and stuff, and that was, that's been, that's been more or less, you know, a couple of meetings back, then any of that stuff was really debated or discussed. It's been a, you know, it's just been a couple of very small language changes, mostly to, you know, satisfy the fact that they can't ask the police department to violate any state or federal regulations. So, you know, they, there's an understanding of that. Anyway, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's about done. It's just a matter of making sure that everyone understands that the final or the stepped in by the community of it has to be done through us rather than the, the five or six members of this committee. And other than pushing that on to the law, for that to come back, and as a matter of fact, it was kind of interesting last night because the, the person who's been the legal person all the way along has participated in most of the meetings, and actually, both groups, Mike, not that there, not that there are two groups, but everybody who's had communication with her said that they've had a very no luck communicating with her for the past six or eight weeks since our last meeting, which was in March third. So, they're a little concerned about that, and they're trying to find out if she's okay, and then they're going to, you know, continue the process. But there was also quite a bit of discussion last night, group, about some, some education programs and video viewings and movies and stuff that they'd like to, you know, have people get involved with through the Human Relations Committee and the Maynard Anti-Race Association, MARA. Those two groups were gathered to create that and also to form a little bit of a, a book club with some of the, you know, books and documents out there, not necessarily books, but you know, papers, dressing articles and papers submitted to different publications to be read and shared among, among the group and talked about, and there was some discussion about, you know, members of the group actually reading the books on video and, and online and, and those type of, so, it's quite a, you know, it's a positive, very positive group. Everything's always very positive, and they're moving along quite well, and, you know, to the point, Mike Noble and the, a couple of the chairs of that group have done a great job of getting the work done. And that's it. That's, that's all I have is a report on the update of that committee. So, as far as board member reports, David?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. I see that Michelle is still on the, the line. Can you give us an update? How many, and I don't know when you start counting votes, but how many, how many ballots has been sent out to the public for the upcoming election? And how many have been returned?
I believe I've mailed out a little over two fifty, and we're, we're getting a lot back, which is good.
Yeah. All right.
It's very steady, I'll tell you that.
That's another aspect of where we, I think we did a good job at getting word out as to, you know, the proper way to get a mail-in ballot. So, I think that's been helpful. And likewise, I've been hearing a lot of people about, you know, making sure that they are going to either vote on Election Day or by mail. So, yeah, okay, that's good, two hundred and fifty. The, the second thing is, Greg, I wonder, is Justin, is Justin on? Yeah, he is. Justin, this is for you. Over, yesterday, there was some work being done over at Alumni Field on the flagpole, and there was a big, huge truck in there, and they were doing some work with, I don't know what the heck they were doing, but a big, huge truck that could reach the top of the flagpole. And they pulled the fence back so that the truck could get in, but then they never put the fence back. So, the fence is folded back right now, and anybody can, you know, come walking through, and not that, you know, not that it's now not, not no longer open, but there's an open portion of the fence that's peeled back. I don't know if the people who were over there working on the fence were supposed to repair that fence when, before they left or after they left, or if that's just pending, you being able to get staff over to do it, but it's, it's still folded back.
David, this is Justin DeMarco, DPW director. It is the last part of your comment. So, just based on staffing levels, they're going over there hopefully tomorrow to put the fence back together.
Okay.
This is a very easy to take apart. They're a little more complicated to put back together, so it's on, it's, it's on the agenda.
All righty, that's it.
All right. Anything else, David? Okay, Justine?
I just have a couple of things. The first is, the Hometown Heroes Committee is meeting this Thursday night. We are, and, and I think we, we did put out some promotional information, that we did actually get the banners in. We got everything in on time for what would have been Memorial Day, but of, of course, due to COVID, we not put anything up. What we're trying to discuss now is our next steps, because we really would like to put them up, you know, sooner rather than later, but we want to have a really thoughtful rollout process too. So, Justin has graciously agreed to join us on the call as well, because obviously manpower has something to do with it as well. So, we'll get all that hammered out on Thursday at six thirty. And the only other thing I have is, and this is just for me, it's, it's a sticking point, but I just wanted to point it out to the rest of my board members, is that I was looking over the slide for the school committee that they're putting out for, the, putting out at town meeting. And one of the things that keeps sticking with me is they keep saying we, that, that the town is giving them a, or, or they will get a three point six-six percent increase over last year's budget. And what they actually mean, and I finally got it clarified today, is it's a three point six-six percent increase over what the spring meeting was, but the fall meeting, when they had to cut by eighty-six thousand dollars on the town side and the school side, they're not counting that cut as part of the budget. So, if you look at what their budget was in the fall of, of, at the fall town meeting, they're getting a, it's a four point one percent increase as opposed to a three point six-six percent increase. And for me, that's, it is an important sticking point, because I feel like three point six sounds a lot lower than a four point one. But I've been trying to get to the root of this for, for about a month now, and I finally got it clarified today, and, and I guess that the business managers both agreed that the way that they were supposed to do it was to go by the original budget number, even though the approved budget number was adjusted in the fall. So, I just wanted to let everybody know.
Okay. Armand?
The only thing I have to say is that I experienced the parade for the graduates, and I thought it was a tremendous experience. I, 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 I think that this is something that would be nice to practice every year, because I think the, the graduates will have a fun time doing that, and everybody that was on the parade route experienced the same thing. So, I thought it was really, really awesome, you know, showing.
It was fun to be in, too.
Yeah, I'm sure it was. I just felt bad for the, the last, you know, the drummer, when he showed up, he was like at the tail end. All of a sudden, the drummer just came out of nowhere. So, there he is. But it was, it was fun to watch, and someone had posted on Facebook, the aerial view was unbelievable, just to see the aerial view of that entire parade was, was something to, to be seen.
That was great. That was actually, I believe that was Sergeant Peterson from Maynard Police that did that.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, Maynard Police has been, has been really helpful with, with helping the senior class of twenty twenty celebrate appropriately. So, it's been, it's been very nice.
Yeah, it was fun. That's all I got.
Okay, so, that's all I think we all have. Anyways, Justine, congratulations on getting your son to the finish line and to all the laziness that we're in.
Yeah.
Good luck Saturday with the, the presentation of the diplomas.
Thank you.
And anything else? And thank you for handing out the proclamations. I was, because of my own work, was unable to make it that day, so we appreciate that as well. And our next meeting is scheduled for the Saturday, the thirteenth, or Friday, depending upon information we've spoken in the interim. And then after that, the next meeting is Tuesday, the sixteenth. And all that being said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who's in favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I as well. Thank you all.
Have a great night.